Good evening. How is everyone?
Wonderful.
All right, glad to hear that. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings at NJSA 1046 PL 1971, excuse me, 75, C-231 S-1 amended 2006 C-70 S-2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Ms. Jones. Ms. Lada Raca.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Mr. Pinkney.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Please stand for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as God is with us.
Mr. Hastings.
In the absence of Mr. Lada Raca, would you please handle the...
Finance Committee report?
Yep.
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday. A number of items were discussed. We talked about the rollout of the Kronos Time Management System. The district administration has made several calls with the company to lay out and develop the background and how the system's going to work for our staff. That program is moving along and we expect by mid-August to be able to start testing the system at Central Office with the staff there. The committee did talk about promoting the district and the district programs and how that relates to accountability regulations. We've talked about the Parent Center and the different activities that were sponsoring through the Parent Center and some of the funding that's associated with that. We did continue the conversation about the 2020 budget and the continuing impact of the S-2 bill that was passed last July on our funding going forward over the next several years. The legislative audit... the legislative audit has been completed and we expect to hear back from them in the next month. However, we are now moving into that time of year where we have our annual audit. So we're swapping out one group of auditors for another group of auditors. And that'll begin probably in the beginning of October with the annual audit for the 2019 school year. And then the committee did touch upon the superintendent's plan with the reallocation of some of the grade levels. So the committee talked about that and talked about different factors that were associated with those plans.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Madam Vice President, are you prepared to report out for Buildings and Grounds?
Okay, so we had our Buildings and Grounds meeting on July 17, 2019. There were no facility use requests. We talked about several power outage that had been rolling through the city even before this storm. We have a couple of summer projects going, fences being repaired, sidewalk repairs, carpeting and stairwells, the gym being done, the floor being finished over at the middle school. And we're installing the sleeves for the volleyball nets so that we don't have to roll them out every time now. And also, the district is completing roof inspection of all the buildings and right now there's no significant repairs needed. I also requested a cost comparison for the possible move of the board office to the third floor of Barack Obama as opposed to the Buildings and Grounds building. So I'm waiting on those numbers.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Lozinski?
Okay, policy. You'll see three groups of items on your agenda. One is the regulations that by statute and administrative law, the board has to approve when they're changed. So we went through and went back to see what needed to be updated and part of them are on the agenda tonight. There's going to be another group next month that'll be on as soon as they're done. Public Relations, there's an update on the policy regarding First Amendment rights of public district employees and make sure that when they're not working, you know, they have the right to speak and have an opinion but not representing the board or the district or in their capacity as an employee. Also, the Bylaw Committee, excuse me, the Bylaw regards to committees, there's some clarification on the roles and it's a short sentence at the bottom of the Bylaw. I'm sure everybody had a chance to read it and that's all we have.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. Ms. Breach?
The Athletic Committee met. We were discussing since we have a change in leadership at the director position, we're going to do an inventory of all the items that we have that were donated in the past few years so we have a good accountability of what we have to get ready for homecoming. The homecoming date, we had talked about two dates, but I think we're going with the 18th now. So October 18th is the official date for homecoming. So we're going to start doing our ad hocs and our committee meetings to get ready for fantastic homecoming again. And we also spoke about food trucks to try to get that out. Mr. Hastings is working on that. Hopefully we'll have that solidified for our next meeting in August. We want to pump up our social media for our sports teams. I feel it's kind of lacking a little bit. Also, you know, to push towards the women's volleyball that will be in its second year that was very successful its first year. And also, we are going to have a JV women's soccer team at the high school this year, which is the first time we're going to introduce, you know, another sport to our young ladies at the high school. We have a presentation for the official unveiling of the Bruno plaque.
October 4th.
October 4th. We said September, but there was a conflict with a couple of us with September, so October 4th will be the official unveiling of the Bruno plaque dedicating the stadium to Butch Brown. And that's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breach. And now, Mr. Ruiz for Curriculum, please.
Good evening, everyone. At our curriculum meeting, we talked about several items. One of the main focus points was devoted to our after-school programs and what the breakdown of costs were. And you could see those reflected in items number 13, 14, and 15. The main takeaway was looking at, obviously, since we're being affected budgetarily, what we can do to save money. So we were able to look at our costs from the previous year, taking into account the new salary range for our teachers and cutting back. So we're looking at, hopefully, a savings or at least of about $120,000 from the cost of last year, similar to what we did with summer program this year. Other items include a grant-funded program, federal grant. This is a two-part grant. The first part was approved at a previous agenda item. This one is going to focus on assessment and training. So that's a $250,000 grant and there are no matching fund requirements for that. And also, just continuing our partnership with Lake House. And we also broke down the cost there as well. And those are the main takeaways from our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Are there any questions? Okay. So now I am going to open the public participation in accordance with board policy. So we have a lectern here. I'll tell you the process. You have three minutes. Mr. Hastings will be our timekeeper. Please come to the lectern and date your name first and last and your physical address.
My name is Beverly Lyons. I'm a resident of 1701 Ocean Avenue here in Asbury Park, alumni of this wonderful district. And I'm here tonight because of a great concern of a major transition that's happening with our populace of children. I just want to know if someone could give, not only myself, but I'm sure as the public comes forward to ask questions, just what is happening, what has happened, and why is this happening at this point concerning the closure of Barack Obama and the transferring students from that school to our two remaining elementary schools and the change with our middle school encompassing the high school with our seventh and eighth graders. So my question is, and I hate to say it this way, but I'm 73, so could you make it real plain for me so I can understand? Because I want to be a product of giving correct information. I don't want to go by what I think, but I want to come to you and let you know that I support your work, your determination to be there for our children, but our parents need to know. And of course, by them coming, they would say that with their presence, but those that should ask of me, I do want to give them the truth. Thank you.
So, first of all, I want to thank you.
Okay.
For being here tonight. And we do appreciate your concern. This is not going to be a Q&amp;A session, okay? But I do believe, we all believe, that you are entitled to an answer. So out in the community, you're hearing a lot of negative things.
Yes.
And it's alarming. There are changes that are going to be taking place here in this district.
Okay.
Okay? Never before has our superintendent had to lift such a heavy burden with us losing $24 million.
Yes.
And a decline in enrollment.
Okay.
And what we are left with is the task of educating those children, your children, our children. So in order to do that, there are going to be changes. And Madam Superintendent, I'm sure she will speak for herself, but she is in the process of creating a framework where everyone will be involved and able to, you know, participate in that. It's best to come here.
Yes.
And speak to the superintendent.
Right.
So that you are getting the exact information, factual information, instead of those that you hear out in the community. Some people will say, "Well, this is done before and it's not going to work." Changes are happening and you understand that without change, there isn't any growth and there isn't any development. If you, in six months, it'll be 2020, right?
Yes.
And if you, when you're shopping, there's a new store five below that's at the old Sea View Square Mall.
Yes.
When you go in there, instead of having a cashier, it's now self-serve.
Yes, it is.
So in five to six years, the jobs that we have today are not going to exist. Our children that are now in kindergarten.
Yes.
Are not going to have, we don't even know what they're going to be doing as far as jobs. Things are changing very quickly. What Madam Superintendent is doing and what we as the board, we're looking at how we can have our children college and career-ready. You see, Walmart in three to five years is going to lay off 30% to 70% of their workers. If you go into Stop &amp; Shop, you'll see a robot rolling down the aisles taking inventory.
Yes.
So we have to make changes in the way our children think. We have to prepare them. And so it may mean repurposing, as Madam Superintendent has said, the Obama School and taking our seventh and eighth graders and placing them at the high school. They're socializing with high schoolers anyway. So it's not that we're trying to do, create something brand-new. We have to if our kids are going to be ready for tomorrow. Mrs. Breach?
Ms. Lyons, I want to thank you so much for coming out tonight and for participating in this public portion of the meeting. All of the things that Madam President has stated, I ditto and chime in those sentiments. I was able to have our first, the first of many community stakeholders meetings for which I put your name down on the list because I want to make sure that we are engaging you in these conversations. This is not something that I want the community to feel like is being done to them, but I want them to understand this is something that's being done with them, with them in mind. So just by way of more context, I report to nine people known as the board. Collectively, they are my bosses. As the superintendent of schools, I have, as the leader of this school district, I have to cast a vision. When we're told that we are facing a $24 million reduction in state aid, the first thing that everybody wants to know is, as the leader, have you thought about this? And if you have, what is the framework that you're putting in place? So what I shared at the last June, at the June board meeting was the framework for how I envision us addressing this $24 million reduction in state aid. It would be inappropriate and out of order for me to have those conversations with anyone other than the Board of Education. I have to talk to nine people at the same time, so at the same time they all have the benefit of hearing my vision for how that will be addressed. After me, after having shared that with the board in its totality, then I reached out to some critical community stakeholders that we have been working with since my tenure in the district, very collaboratively. What you will see and hear is through our social media, through our website, there will be ongoing stakeholder meetings that will engage parents, that will engage students, and that will continue to engage members of the community in conversations around the two areas that you just mentioned. One being the repurposing of Obama School, the other one being conversations around what the restructure of the high school can look like. I appreciate and have an open-door policy. Love that you came out tonight and just very straight-shooting went to those two areas of concern because I'm a parent first, so I do understand the concern that may be felt by many there. But I just need you to understand, and I want to be on record as saying, I could not engage the parents nor the community without engaging the Board of Education first. So please be on the lookout. As I shared, I've taken your name down. Please be on the lookout for invitations from my office for us to continue to have conversations together. The requirement of the school district to provide a thorough and efficient education becomes challenging when you're looking at a $24 million reduction in state aid. We are required to provide a thorough and efficient education. My task is to ensure that we maintain quality programs, keep quality programs in place, but also follow the letter of the law. And so I am the first superintendent under previous Abbott regulations to have to have this challenge placed upon me where we're looking at that. In our personal lives, sometimes we understand some of us have to rob Peter to pay Paul during times of the month. We got to pay one bill, but we can't pay the other bill. And so that's where the collective conversation with parents, with community stakeholders, and obviously with individuals inside our organization will happen. Thank you so much for coming out tonight to ask your question.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Nina Summerlin. My address is 1101 Bangs Avenue from Asbury Park. I'm also the president for Westside Citizens United and also the project director for Alliance for Health at Asbury Park. And I would just like to say to, let alone to the board, but to the superintendent, I was actually one of those stakeholders who attended the meeting that you had yesterday. And Ms. Beverly is also a part of one of my organizations, so I was actually able to express to her how positive I felt when I left yesterday's meeting because of the fact that in our community, we're always hearing so much negative about Asbury Park. For me, when I walked out of your meeting yesterday, it was more of a matter of something positive, being able to move forward with a better direction. My only thing is, like, I would like to extend, you know, as our group, we like to actually sort of start holding more town hall meetings to where our parents of what's really going on and to actually start filling some of our seats at our board meetings. Because, and I hate to say this, but I have no children in our district anymore. My youngest is 20. But when I look at this, I look in here and I'm kind of like, wow, where are all our parents? If we're really concerned about what's really going on in our district, why you're not filling these seats? So I just want to say I thank you guys for actually holding a stakeholder meeting that you did have yesterday, but actually moving forward, I'd like to push out into our community more town hall meetings to get people more aware of what's really going on in your own community because you have a vested interest if your child actually goes to these schools. But to look at a board meeting and see that none of these parents are here, it kind of appalls me. But I do like to say thank you and I look forward to the next meeting.
We are working on having a town hall meeting. The first of, we plan on having at least two a year. So we're working on having one in August.
August 21st.
August 21st at like a general location so that more people feel welcome to come.
And as Westside Citizens United, we're actually planning our own town hall meetings, which will also be in August to inform our parents to come out and get involved. As Westside Citizens United president, we are pushing to do our own town hall meeting to educate our parents of where they're lacking, of not coming to a board meeting and what they're missing out on. So I do applaud you, you know, for going back to town hall meetings, but as being in the community, the community also has to push the issue of getting more people involved in what's going on instead of talking about something, actually come to a meeting and understand what's going on. So I applaud you.
I thank you for that.
Anytime.
First of all, Ms. Summerlin, thank you. I mean, you're one of the people that I look up to in terms of you're always there, you're always in the community, and you're a titan for the entire city in terms of everything you do, so thank you for that. The one thing that I wanted to say was, first of all, like Sheila said, the board members are, we're planning a town hall meeting for August 21st and, what's that?
Inflating.
Yes. Yeah, we've been, the planning committee has been working on the structure for that. The other portion, other part of that is that, you're right, in terms of outreach, one of the things that I've, you know, I've been asking some questions about is to put it out there more on social media whenever we have a school board meeting to see, you know, if we can push it out more on Nextdoor and on Facebook and on other social media, maybe even put the agenda out there, the most updated version of the agenda if possible. That's something that, people look at that all the time. I go on Nextdoor first thing in the morning just to see what's going on. So that's something that, you know, I'd like to see, you know, work with Jeff and also with the administrators to have it be a consistent thing so that way we get the word out as much as possible because this is something that no one's ever really, we haven't faced any challenges like this before, but I think with, working collaboratively with the community, with these board members, we're going to prevail. So that's what I'd like to see.
Ms. Summerlin, I just want to thank you again for your comments and the public participation as was shared by the board members. The board will be conducting those town hall meetings as they've shared, but in addition to the town hall meetings that the board will be conducting, as the superintendent of schools, I will be convening ongoing and sustained meetings that are for a collaborative between our parents, our key stakeholders in the community, as well as some student representation so that we can be very specific, intentional, and focused on those two areas that have come up already, which is the repurposing of Obama School and the restructure of the high school. Because in so doing, I want our parents to be a part of that thought process and that planning. What I presented was a framework. What I'm looking to do is engage the stakeholders so we create a robust plan.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1034 Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm about to pass out. I only bought a few, but it's an old summary. I have one for a superintendent and a president and a director of curriculum. What I just, I don't know, I want to turn my back to you. What I just passed you was an old plan for Nantech World, but it is coming with a partnership with Pan-African Chambers of Commerce of Asbury Park. To Asbury, in the fall, we're building a beautiful building on Madison Avenue. But I specifically brought that to you because we spoke about the future. The future is in technology. This isn't a guess. This is already in existence. We have a 40,000 square foot facility in Newark 400 Hawthorne that has a completely computerized and accelerated Cisco training program. That's the future. With a partnership with Panasonic, also in a packet, it's kind of extensive on how do you fundraise, how do we fundraise, how we just received our first miniscule grant in the last, say, few months. But previous to this, this million-dollar facility has been publicly, privately, and ourselves funded. So inside is a brief plan because as of the projections say, by 2030, the African-American and minority community will have a net value of zero. So I'm saying this, and this is a fact, I'm saying that to say we have to be creative in our vision. You know, I heard the vision and, you know, I'm not, again, I wasn't, I was glad to close Obama and I'm kind of glad to close it again. I don't think you should be in it. I actually think it should be a museum. But the idea is of redistricting. I met with a few parents last week and we came up with this kind of proposal that we're kind of etching out of maybe having a couple things. Bringing back home our out-of-district schools and repurposing the middle school for a alternative school. Also, redistricting and also separating our primary schools and doing half of the high school as a, you know, Board of Education or some kind of special initiatives. Wind turbines are huge and the whole coast is about to be full of it thanks to Murphy. So having something creative to kind of bring our kids back to the district, this is what we're talking about. They're extremely scared of their seventh and eighth graders going to the high school. I think you have to, I'm excited about the engaging of the community. I really believe that you need to listen to the input because there's a lot of creative ideas that they have. And that's pretty much it. Please look and contact me on that because, again, it's already a running program and the Cisco training is a four-month accelerated Cisco training where they can leave out of school for all ages, but we'll specifically make one for children age kids.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Diane Shelton. I'm a resident at 1201 Springwood Avenue. I just wanted to commend the superintendent and the staff that were there. Yesterday, I echo Nina's comments. I think most of us came away very, very excited. I thank you for that. I came away understanding TNE and a lot of terms that I, just are educational terms that you all know, but when they're thrown at us, we don't know. I just want to say on behalf of NFA neighbors, we look forward to our continued partnership.
Good evening, I mean, excuse me. My name is Milagro Gomez. I work here in the community. It's not working.
It is, just.
My name is Milagro Gomez and I work here in the community, Asbury Park.
Your name and your address.
My address is in Neptune. I work also local in Neptune also and with the parents wherever I have to do my work and I'm here on behalf of the Hispanic community. Needed to know what is going to be done about the ESL teachers? Are they going to place more ESL teachers in all the schools? Are they going to support the needs of the Hispanics that don't speak English? That's what, that was the question. Are you going to place more ESL teachers? Um, that's what I, that was the question. Are you gonna play smart ESL teachers?
In terms of the programmatic needs for our students, all of our staffing supports, um, delivering a T and E, as Ms. Shelton pointed out, a thorough and efficient education based on the needs for all students. Um, ESL, or as we more commonly refer to them now as English learners, are not without the proper supports in any of our schools.
I was told by many parents that they're, they're taking the classes and yet they're not learning the Eng- the English properly to utilize it.
If I understood your question initially, your comment was about ensuring that we had enough staff to support our English learners. Yes, we have enough staff to provide, to support our English learners. What I'm hearing now is slightly different in that you're talking about how they're being supported.
Yes.
And so our students have the necessary programmatic and curricular supports to ensure that they are being, um, addressed. Additionally, we have staff bilingual clerical assistants in every school so that our parents are greeted in another language, in Spa- in particular, Spanish, when they enter the building so that we don't have any gaps there. So in terms of our staffing, we are very sensitive in addressing that. We have a district bilingual parent involvement specialist that's housed at the parent center that's here tonight to provide translation services should any of our parents or families need that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else for public participation?
My name is William Butler. I'm the chair of, former chairperson of the Monmouth County Mental Health Board and the treasurer of the Asbury Park Statewide Education Organization Committee. My main concern about reorganization is coupling seventh and eighth graders with high school students. I'm concerned about the safety and welfare of seventh and eighth graders being in a high school situation with kids who are 17 and 18 years old. I'm afraid that kids who are in the seventh and eighth grade, normally 12, 13, maybe at the most 14 years old, might be bullied by older kids. And I'm wondering if the Board of Education from, from 2019, the fall through, um, the spring of 2020, would publish the core curriculum that kids will be facing, um, so that they can get, uh, a, a preview of the types of courses that are being offered in Asbury Park. Also, it's been brought to my attention that the high school has no chemistry teacher. And it's absolutely imperative, I think, in any classroom study to have someone who can, who can help kids answer their questions. Finally, I'm wondering that if you have kids who are in high school, like my cousin in, um, in Robert E. Lee High School in San Antonio, if you would consider having a mentoring program for high school students who are getting good grades to help kids who are in the seventh and eighth grade transition into high school who may, who may be getting poor grades but with mentoring from older kids, uh, might, might be doing better. I know with reorganization and the financial problems that you're faced with this year, that you've had to go through reorganization, but I would like you to take some very serious look about how everything is gonna be for high school children and junior high school children in the same plant and how the library situation is gonna work for kids who are 12 and 13 years old at one level and kids who are 14 to 18 years old at another level.
Anyone else for a public participation?
Good evening. My name is Alice Arizari. I live at 610 Soul Avenue in Asbury Park. Um, my son was actually one of the first students to go to the middle school when it opened. So he went at an age that I didn't expect him to be at the middle school. When he came home, when he left me, he left with his pants buttoned and up. When he came home, he came home with his pants down to his kneecaps. And I told him, leave my house, fix those pants, and you can come back in. My concern is that he did have to deal with a lot of bullying from the older children. That was my biggest concern. And the reason why none of it went through because I was constantly at the school, constantly at the board meetings. I was there all the time. They looked and they said, oh, here she comes, there she is. And I was loud. I spoke. I'm concerned about these babies going to a school that is much younger than, that's much older than them. Okay, I'm really concerned about that. There are a lot of Hispanic parents that are concerned. And I am concerned with the no-show of parents. I am concerned about that. Because that to me, your education is more important than anything. There are, there is a lot of talk, parents are concerned, are worried for their children. And so my, I know that you can't speak about that here or, um, it's only spoken at the meeting, um, there. So it, it's a concern and a lot of people want to know, even though there are not a lot of parents here, we still want to know what's going on.
If there isn't anyone else, I will be closing public participation.
Good evening. My name is Aisha Mohammed. I have two skin of evil and, um, the same district. My cousin was, have my youngest, my oldest son go to the middle school early, earlier than he, he's still out. And I'd rather move out of the school district and put him somewhere else before I let that happen. And I have another question. He plays sports. And I was wondering why, what's the big deal about the games being in Asbury? Why they always gotta go to another school, to like, to the visiting schools? Like, there's always an issue when they play sports in Asbury High School, like football or anything they do athletic. Like, the younger children cannot go there. Why is that?
Man, what, what sport are you talking about?
Football.
You're saying the eighth grade football? Is he in middle school? Or is he in high school?
He's a, um, he played for the, um, the nine-year-old.
Okay, so that, that's not, uh, an Asbury Park School District team. We, that's not our team, that's the, um, Hot Water, I believe. Um, that has nothing to do with the school district. But he's nine years old?
Yeah.
No, that's not the Asbury Park School District.
It's Asbury team, it's an Asbury team.
Yes, but that's a private organization. That's not the district, the school district. We don't have an elementary school team. We have a middle school team, eighth grade, and we have a high school team. We don't have a nine-year-old team. That's a private organization.
How about the, um, track? It's a, um, it's an Asbury recreation.
Again, that's not the Asbury School District.
Okay.
Okay?
So is this, um, the, the students going to seventh and eighth grade in the middle school? I mean, in the high school, is that written in stone or you just trying to figure things out?
At the end of everyone's comments, Madam Superintendent will address those issues.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you. If there isn't anyone else, then I am going to be closing public participation. Okay.
Ernest McNolly, 400 Dill Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park. I've lived there since August of 2007. I'm semi-retired out of, uh, education, a long decades career in, uh, public education, administration. I'm semi-retired now because of a voice problem from graduate education program where I've been a professor for decades and decades. So I, I, I come to the, to the meetings because I like to think that, uh, having a lot of background in education, that somehow I could find a receptive, um, board and situation. And of course, I want to say that with the Board of Education, with the Asbury Park Police Department, with the Asbury Park Fire Department, with the Asbury Park Department of Public Works, and with the departments in general, that doesn't exist. It just seems to be a disconnect between homeowners, taxpayers, residents, uh, families and individuals and, uh, and, and the city administrations. Uh, further, the more you bring that out and the more you come and try and help, the more you seem to feel or be treated, uh, in an alienating way. Uh, but I'm okay with that because I know that, uh, unless someone's willing to deal with the realities and the hard issues in Asbury Park, nothing's gonna change. There can be, uh, meeting after meeting after meeting, council meeting or, or whatever meeting, and it just seems to just keep going on and on and on. Um, so, uh, with my last minute, I'd like to, uh, make a, a, a comment. Uh, I was here a few weeks ago and I complained, made a complaint about using school high school and, uh, now, uh, the Bangs Avenue School, the middle school, Amory Field, for events that have alcohol, whiskey, beer, smoking, propane, food, children present. Uh, and I re- I reported it to the Asbury Park High School principal and to the superintendent, and that's the last I heard from you. Uh, I think it's egregious that that could go on in the presence of the fire chief and the police chief. Uh, people drinking in public at the school. I noticed that the gates are closed, so therefore, somebody has to give them the keys. And why no one's being held responsible for this? The high school, on a weekend, it was a Sunday. At the transportation center, there was another event with liquor, with children present. And now I understand that the last two Sundays there's been at the middle school, 300, 400, 500 people.
Thank you. This will now close the public participation. Madam Superintendent.
Couple of comments, uh, related to the restructure of the high school. I just would like, uh, to add some clarification for you, but also note that the clarification that I'm providing for you tonight is not that as comprehensive as it will be as, as we move forward in engaging you in ongoing and sustained conversations, uh, as parents and community members. The high school has a capacity to hold approximately 2,000 students. We are 20% capacity. We will have a staggered, staggered, um, start and stop time where the different populations will enter so that we can decrease the amount of co-mingling of our students because we have a facility that will allow us to do that. In addition, we'll have an, a different entrance and exit for our different students. We'll have them contained in one part of the high school because it allows us to do that. We have wonderful academies, career academies at the high school that are cost prohibitive for us to replicate in another building. And so by bringing these students to the high school, it will afford them an opportunity to take advantage of those rich and robust programs. One of the other community people, people mentioned about technology. We have wonderful technology at the high school that now we can make sure our seventh and eighth graders have an opportunity to participate and take advantage of. I invite you to continue to stay abreast. In order to stay abreast, please check out our website, stay attached to us, and connect with us on our social media where you'll find regular and ongoing updates. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Superintendent. It is now, uh, a little past seven o'clock. It is... Okay, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move.
I need someone to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
According to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10460, L 275, C 231 S 1, Amendment 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education is providing adequate guidance of this meeting by sending the notice of the time, date, location, and to its definite agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building, Wilton Ford, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and the Department of the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Mr. Hastings will go please.
Ms. Bridge?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. LaRocca?
Ms. Liston?
Here.
Ms. Higginson?
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Seth Yeh?
Here.
Seth LeSain?
Here.
We have a presentation by our superintendent, Mrs. Gray.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
As required by our regulations, uh, our quality, single accountability continuum, also known as QSTAC report, must be shared in our working. And so our initial placement for QSTAC, which is our monitoring for the benefit of the members in the audience. QSTAC is the state-required monitoring tool that is, um, that all school districts according to the administrative code must be in compliance with those accountability requirements. And so we had our initial placement for QSTAC that involves five key areas. Those five key areas are instruction and programs, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. Our initial placement was June 2017. In June 2017, for instruction and programs, we were at 27%. Fiscal management was 98%. Governance was 59%. Operations was 95%. And personnel was 80%. I'm delighted to share that, uh, based on our interim review placement as of June 2019, our instruction and programs has increased, it is now increased by 42%. We are at 69% for instruction program. Our fiscal management has been consistent. And I'd like to, uh, take this time to acknowledge the business administrator and his team, Ivy Brown, and all the members that work with him in that regard. They've maintained 98%, which is obviously 2% short of 100. Our governance is an increase from 59% to 86%. Our operations has also been consistent. Who knows, to our director of operations and her team and all the other members that supply information for operations, Ms. Buford and her team. But as I shared, within operations, there are other members of the executive leadership that feed into that score and they have maintained their 95% rating. And personnel, again, Ms. Buford and her team, as well as other members of the executive leadership have maintained 80%. So, um, delighted to see that in some cases we have increased significantly and other cases we have maintained and we are moving forward consistently in that regard. And these are the board. Thank you, Mark.
Well, first of all, I meant to say thank you. And in the words of, uh, I guess...
And in the words of, uh, I guess George Jefferson, we are moving on now. So I'm very happy with the numbers. Thank you very much. What else I can report for you? Madam Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
I do. Um, I mentioned in the workshop, I would like to mention now in this official, uh, board meeting. Yesterday, we had the first of many stakeholders meetings. Very delighted with the turnout and the attendance. We have had, since my tenure in this district, very comprehensive partnerships within our community. Many of the executive leadership members are actively involved in the city of Asbury Park. We have nonprofits, we have pastors, we have community activists. We have all kinds of, uh, members from the Chamber of Commerce that have been working very diligently with the school district since I've been here. And I, um, invited them for the first of many meetings to talk about the framework. As I shared in the workshop meeting, it would be very inappropriate and out of order for me to cast a vision to the community, to parents or to anyone else before the nine members of the board sitting here, well, not all present tonight, but before the nine members of the board got to hear the vision. As the superintendent, as the first superintendent, uh, since Abbott regulations and we're no longer considered an Abbott district, there's been several iterations around that. But I mentioned Abbott and I mention that because it's, that was the initial ruling that mandated thorough, a thorough and efficient education and provided state aid to close, to attempt to close the gap for students in high poverty and minority students. And so that was the impetus behind why the, um, state provided the district with funds. Because there was this concern and it continues to go back and forth. There was a concern around the ability of the local taxpayers to be able to contribute the local fair share in a way that provided a thorough and efficient education for its children. I mentioned that I'm the first superintendent to have this task in front of me, which amounts to the reduction of $24 million in state aid. And so at the last June board meeting, what I shared was Vision 2020 in terms of how we will need to reimagine and rethink our district. I'm so delighted that I had a, a committee of individuals that were very focused and very intent on working with us. I'm optimistic and excited as we continue now to share more information. As questions arise and we continue to share more information, that group of stakeholders will be expanded to be inclusive of more parents, to be inclusive of students and to be inclusive of, inclusive of more community members. It's a very heavy lift, but it's a doable lift when we come together as a community and really put our heads and our heads together and come up with very innovative and creative ideas. So I invite you to continue to look at our district website. We are also involved on every social media platform, I think with the exception of Snapchat. We're on every social media platform and we constantly push out content so that we are keeping you engaged. I realize that our parent engagement is not just warm bodies in a room. But we have analytics that show that our parents are engaged through our social media and we will continue to engage them any way possible and by any means necessary. And we're going to push out these communications because it's important to us that you have accurate information. And if at any time, I want to be a record, if at any time anyone has any questions about the forecast for the future, please do not hesitate and contact me. It's a framework that's been presented. This is not something that will be done to the community, but it's something that will be done with the community. And I vouch for your participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Before I, uh, open the public participation, I just, I'm very impressed with Madam Superintendent's, uh, report on our Q-SAC scores. First of all, great job to our CNI Restructuring Curriculum Department and our VA. We are doing an awesome job. And I just want to thank all of you and Madam Superintendent because we're working, you're working as a team. And I want to speak to my board because our government score was fifty-nine percent and now it's eighty-six percent. And that wouldn't happen if we were not seeing each other, working with each other as a team. And sometimes we may disagree on things. We may not see everything the way I see it or you see it. But it's never a personal...